All this meeting to order and document the time is 6:37. And if you would join me in the pledge, we appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, welcome. Tori, if I can turn it over to you to get us reoriented from wherever we've been. Appreciate that.
We're all gonna sit, take some time, and just arrive. So take a deep breath in and breathe out. Take another deep breath in and out. Just start settling into your own body on your in-breath. Rising up, another out-breath, settling in. And tonight, we're gonna use sound. You can hear that blowing sound from the radiator. And just sort of watch your mind, find your regular breathing pattern, and just let all the day's stuff just sort of settle in as you just listen. Listen to sound. We take this time of breathing in silence and listening to integrate what's come before us so that we can be sit here, present, and hold Winuski community, our families, and our students, and the children of Winuski at the heart of what we do here. So take another deep breath in and breathe out. Ready to govern for the better of all people.
Thank you. Alright, agenda review and adjustments. Got a couple of items. One, actually, we got one item, and that is, in front of you, Sean and Rebecca have put together the costs associated with the parking lot and the water main fix. So we want to put that in under Section 6C. Cover that when we get there. Any other adjustments on the agenda? Okay, we did, based on the weather tonight, we did move the focus on learning. We're gonna move that out. I think we're just gonna cascade everything out, one. Based on everything this morning, it would not have been a good thing to have everybody coming tonight. So I don't think there were any other real changes. The student report won't be had tonight. Same reason, let them stay home rather than trying to travel to and fro. Other than that, I think we're good to go. Under public comments, then.
So I wanted to make a public comment, and that was to recognize the school board and all of your efforts that you put forth in governing and leading our district. And this is in conjunction with a resolution that'll be coming out of the Vermont Legislature on January 15th, kind of anointing January as School Board Recognition Month. And so there'll be various things and press releases of different sorts going on around the state, really recognizing all the folks who put in a lot of time and effort in supporting their schools and supporting their communities. So thank you very much for that. And I will be sending on to you, the VSA and the VSBA have worked together to work with Darn Tough Socks so that all of you can go online and get a free pair of Darn Tough Socks for doing a darn tough job.
That is awesome!
There's something to be said for that.
I like socks.
So, thank you very much. And I'll send that information out so you can go online and order your socks.
Awesome.
Darn Tough Socks. Darn Tough.
That's really cute. In my job, they better be.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think you guys too, you guys make this...
You're making me want to leave.
It is not the thankless job that you hear that it is in a lot of places. This has been very rewarding, so.
Your leadership makes it that way. Thank you for holding this all together. You create a great container for us to bring our best every month, so thank you.
So moving in then on the consent agenda. The couple of items in there, just to make sure everybody saw it, school choice capacities and announced tuitions are in there. I would do that once a year. I would accept a motion to accept a consent agenda as is? Alright, any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Moving right along, then. Section 6A is the FMR report. Nothing to report, I think, is the real short answer. When you get into the FMR here, at the top, the expenditures piece, slightly ahead of the... you know, spending slightly less than the budget on a lot of different things. So that, at this point of the year, is not that unusual. Positive to about $45,000. On the revenue side, there's some, Rebecca and I talked about the way the math is done in this sheet, but there is a little bit extra in the revenue, mostly under the miscellaneous revenue. There's a $25,000 line in there that had been budgeted initially at zero without any idea what was coming. So, you know, projected balance at this point is 67K. Obviously, with special ed and the variability in that, who knows? So, but, you know, right on track to where we were. I think the one thing that I just, over the past, since we started with it, is the biggest question I've had is the HSA. We've made some assumptions that we don't necessarily have to put all of the dollars in ahead of time. We think we figured 78...
75%.
75% of what we thought we had total last year. We nailed it almost.
We were like at 73.9.
Almost right on. This year, I think we're still tracking to be fairly close. So we haven't budgeted too far off, just for a comment. But that's one of the items that is a kind of an unknown in here from past history. So you can go back through history and deal with it. General fund, balance at $398. IEP, balance at $174K. Those funds are very strictly specified as to what can and can't be done with them, right?
That's right.
Let's see, grants, again, didn't see anything in there that would rock my, you know, thought process to be anything different. But the one thing I wanted to note in the grants and the miscellaneous is just a note at the bottom of the page that the CFP funds do fund a lot of what we do here. And that's a real big piece of what we have going on in the school community.
Thank goodness it's not tied to the shutdown. The monies have already been distributed. You know, there are a couple of potential implications around, you know, SNAP funds for low-income families.
That's not until mid-February though, right?
Right. And they're trying to bridge that gap, and then possible, if it goes longer, with some Head Start funding, but those are the only two. But none of this, none of the federal funds that we have for this year would be affected.
Alright, and then the reserve account, balance at $365. And we'll see when we take up 6C that we got a little extraction we need to do from that for the parking lot piece, but we'll talk about that one later. Any other questions on the management or the finance of the quarterly report? As always, I'm sure you guys will come and let us know if anything gets out of bounds with that. Then 6B here, budget. So in this section here, we'll talk about the budget, where we go, the warnings, annual report.
Yeah, I would suggest that you, for this...
We have it all.
Yeah, you may want to adopt a budget tonight, so you could table that item till after the budget discussion. And then if you decide not to adopt a budget tonight, then we would need to schedule another meeting anyway.
To do the warnings and...
Yeah, I mean, we'll have all the warnings and everything ready, and I can kind of show you the last year so you remember all that stuff. But you have to formally, obviously, vote and adopt the budget. So I'd recommend that you make a motion to table that until the end of the budget discussion tonight.
Table which one, then?
The adoption of the FY20 budget.
If we choose not to do anything with it?
Right.
Alright. Oh, so those are out of order. We're not gonna adopt a budget we haven't reviewed yet?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying? Should we, okay, so we just postpone that action and just skip over it and come back?
Yeah.
Based on what we do?
Yeah, normally, you would adopt the budget, and then we do the warnings and everything because we're ready at this point, but because of the...
Right, so we're just gonna flip...
Different timeframe of information this year coming out of the state. At that point, we normally are.
Okay. So at that point, then, we just step from there into the... We do the capital update, or do you want to go right into the budget?
Well, I can do the warnings so you know, and I think that you can...
That's just a time.
Yeah, you're just reviewing the warnings and the language, and then as, every year, we plug in the dollars and the amounts and percentages after you adopt the budget. So you can approve the warnings, you know, pending the adoption of the budget.
Final budget, no more.
And then we'll...
Alright.
I just wanted to remind everyone, you know, of what that looks like. Typically, it's Article Number 4 and 5, and 4 is the federal budget. Which is, obviously, it's always an estimate of what we think we're gonna get based on past dollars.
And just as a reminder on that one, that is asking the community to accept the money that the federal government is gonna give us for the programs that are mandated that we run.
Right.
So rejecting this thing is...
Always get a few no votes.
Yes.
But usually, pretty overwhelmingly positive. And then in Article 5, that's the actual school budget. And if you remember, there, a few years ago, there was that required additional language around the spending for equalized pupil, so that that's specifically designated in the warning. It's been on there now for a couple of years. So what we would do is, after you adopt a budget, whether that is tonight or whether that is next week sometime, we'll take the federal budget number for Article 4, we'll take the total operating budget proposal for Article 5, and the equalized pupil amount, and the change in the percentage of spending for equalized pupil, and plug those in. Any questions on the warnings?
We can adopt this pending the final values being entered so that you have it done and ready to do when you need it.
Yeah, because we have a pretty tight timeline, especially if we go into next week in terms of getting the annual report together with the warnings in them and going to print and distribution.
Okay. Alright. So I would accept a motion to adopt the budget warnings as read here with the update of the actual numbers once we finally adopt a budget. Okay, any other questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then just the discussion on the annual report. Something you had? I didn't see that in the backup data.
Yeah, we decided not to put it in there for printing purposes. This is the actual whole... I think most of you are familiar with the annual report. It has all the financials in it, and the audit, and it has information about our staff. It has a piece from you, a piece from me, some photos of things happening in the school community.
It's pretty much boilerplate stuff that you plug in.
It is.
The same stuff.
A lot of it's mandatory, so.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's requirements about what needs to be in there. And we haven't really changed it in a number of years. And we have declined the number of copies that we produce every year just because we end up hauling them back from the places that we put them. And so we try to do a little more electronic distribution by, you know, having it on the website and sending it out to families over mass messaging, and just having less copies available than it seems to save entries, and it seems to make the information plenty available to the community.
Alright, and that was just a discussion point.
Yep.
Then the last item in 6, what would be C here, is the capital project update?
Yep.
Or do you want to do the, you want to do this first, the capital reserve piece?
Yeah, we can do the capital reserve.
Probably be appropriate there, more appropriate there, right?
Yep. So what you have in front of you, there's two sides of it. The backside is unrelated, and that will be a budget. I just wanted to put it all on one page, so we'll reference that later. But as you'll see, this is the request memo that Rebecca wrote to me that I'm bringing forward to you about the recent incident of the water main break, an absolute emergency on New Year's Eve Day that was responded to very timely and very professionally. And it was a significant issue. And the good news is that we were able to open school on time. We had about four hours where we had to limit consumption of water in the elementary, but water testing was all clean and positive, and we had a number of tests done. And so we're here now to come and request that $24,761.11, your approval to draw on the capital reserve account to pay that bill.
Okay.
That's exactly why we have it.
That's exactly.
And you all did a fantastic job handling that.
Yes, yeah, very well done.
A lot of credit.
And the water came back fine? Yeah.
All the bottled water, I mean, there was so many steps it took to get it fixed, but to prepare for it.
So a lot of credit to Rebecca.
Yay Rebecca!
Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca.
She was here, and she worked really well with the city and with all seasons, and...
I mean, you got pizza out of it.
They offered me pizza, yeah, I got to eat with the guys.
Alright, so we just need a motion to appropriate the funds for the, from the capital to cover the water main repair costs.
So moved.
Okay, any other questions? I got one more after. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Alright, the only thing based on this that I would like to, I guess I'm... I'm good with the cost of this thing, and I expected it to be a little bit more, I don't know why, but we've gotta think at one point if that pipe is that crumbly and not having anything to hook onto on the city's end, because at some point, it hits the city property. And, you know, if we fix the piece from the school to where the city is and we can't connect to something solid, I don't know what we do, but it would seem that if we're gonna have this happen again, it might be worth repairing that from the school.
So Rebecca, like in the memo, it said that, you know, they were supposed to meet today, but there wasn't a lot of public works peoples, people available today in the city because they were out on the roads. So Rebecca's meeting with them tomorrow, and that's the whole idea, is to plan for the longer term because we know we and the city have pretty serious underground plumbing issues that need to be remedied. And there are plans for that, long-term plans through the Main Street project, but those aren't slated to start, you know, this summer or anything. So we've gotta figure that out. Rebecca will be working with the city, and we'll have, at the very least, we'll have an update for you at the February meeting, if not a more detailed plan.
Okay. I also assume that based on the fact that only from the lobby over went out, that there's another water main in that services the high school. We probably should throw that into the play. I think the comment might be that it just hasn't crumbled yet.
Yeah, we don't...
Not that it isn't ready to.
Would it have gone in as early as that one would because of the timing of the high school being added?
When I meet with the city, they have some timelines, and they have more information on the actual construction of the pipes, so those are the things we're gonna work on. Some of the piping over there is newer when we did the middle building in '92, so that's helpful.
Still have to get out.
Architect conversation.
Yeah. Okay.
We're exploring it.
Okay, just keep them all together in case. Alright. Good. Then, capital project update.
So the committee met yesterday and went over the main components of the community engagement, which are the facility tours, including a community breakfast. And we're just, this is not ready to go yet, but just to give you a glimpse, part of the promotion is the website. So we're going to have evening tours on January 16th, the 23rd, the 30th, and February 1st. And then the community breakfast is slated for Saturday, January 26th. This is within that kind of strategic frame of, let's do a lot of promotion and education about the project in January, early February, and then let it sit for a little while, leading up to the budget vote in March, so that we don't confuse community members with the two things. And then after the budget vote, the school budget vote, then we would get back to it with more tours and more community forums to collect more feedback. And then at the same time, we would have, you know, we're gonna have the website here, which is almost done, has all the documents, it has the rationale, the why of the project, it has the concept plans in it, it has, it will have a new video that's been cut, it'll have new promotional materials. So I think we're in pretty good shape for this. We will be starting, we have the tour scripted out, and the first one will be led by Cam from TruX Collins, and there will be a bunch of us who will be there to watch it so that we can then lead tours after that. You know, and Mike and Alex as part of board representation on the committee, Rebecca and I, and then other members of the committee like Matt Webb, Catherine Levine, who presented to the board, they'll also have stepped up and are willing to lead some of those tours. So that is kind of where we're at with the capital project. And then the timeline after the operating budget will vote in the beginning of March is that we will need the board probably the end of March, or at the very latest, the first week of April, to adopt an amount to put on a ballot for the community. And then, you have to have at least a 30-day warning period for the ballot item. And we're looking at May 7th or May 14th date, both Tuesdays. We've already started to coordinate with the city on how to do that.
Alright.
So any questions on the timeline or the promotional materials?
I think the biggest thing for me here, obviously, once we get going after the March piece, is getting a good communication flow going. So I'm assuming, well, that would be front porch forum, it'd be personal contact, whatever else we got.
Yeah, so like just even for, we'll use all of our modes of communication, you know, for example, for next week, we'll be putting our front porch forum, it'll be on the electronic sign, we'll use the mass messaging system to send it out to families that are in the school. And, yeah, I think that those are the main ones that we use.
These tours are all associated with basketball games? Is that what, two of the three?
Not all of them. Next week is not associated with the basketball game, and the other three are. So they're kind of like between the JV and the varsity game. So we'll invite everyone to come, but we're hoping also then we can go down and kind of like remind people at that time and invite them to come down and join the tour in between the games. And we'll stall the referees a little bit, so.
That's easy, take the ball. Alright.
Are there things that we can do to assist the community partners? Like, you know, now that I'm thinking, I don't know why I'm thinking I should be talking about this at the, at the capital planning meetings, but we probably need to make sure that we reach out to the PTO, like do a presentation with them whenever we see a time. And then other community partners, like Parents and Youth for Change? I don't know what your thoughts are on that, whether we should be reaching out on that end?
Yeah, Parents and Youth for Change would be great in helping us organize some parents for some sort, either a tour or a presentation.
Right.
Yep. And the PTO, we had tried to kind of get them to, for next Wednesday, but their meeting was so full, they said that they couldn't do it. We're still gonna do it an hour after their meeting, so maybe they'll get done and can come. I've also, in my smaller meetings, I met with two of the officers of the PTO and gave them that presentation.
Okay.
And they have also agreed to help with the community breakfast.
Okay.
So like with childcare and some promotion and...
Alright. Thank you, Sean. Alright, so moving down into Item 7 here, the student report we talked about, moving for this month, and now we got a budget session.
Why don't you sit down, man?
I was gonna warn you, but we put this together to, you know...
Oh goodness.
He wanted the exercise. I did wait for him to sit down, though. Not nice.
I can give out mine if need.
So that is on that backside of that page that you all got of the capital reserve request. And this is some of the information that you all requested at the last meeting, and then some additional information. So some of the things that I wanted to point out here are, if we just focus on the left-hand side, which is the voting results, there's some pretty clear information there to glean that I think you all kind of know, and we've talked about in generalities, but it's pretty compelling to see it here, is that the more people that come out, the higher margin of approval you all get for your budgets. And you can see, you know, in those really close margins, those are the low turnout years. And this is in the most, you know, recent 11 years of votes. And you'll notice that you have passed all of these budget votes. So that's pretty amazing. And if you look at the general down on this sheet, it's in the kind of the pinkish-purple. I didn't do that on purpose for Wednesday, Alex, but it worked out nicely. You know, almost two-thirds in an average, you know, that's pretty darn good to get two-thirds of the vote on average approving your budgets. And you look at some of those turnouts, especially in the last couple of years, pretty high turnouts in a couple of years, you know, and whenever you get up around that 900 amount, you get really, really good margins. So something to be said for, I think, communication and getting out and talking to your neighbors and doing all the formal and the informal communication across the community to make sure that people are participating in a really important democratic practice. To the middle part, I put the budget amount in there, you know, that's nice. I think the most important one that you really want to look at is the tax. And I point that out as, in this year, when you are out talking to the community about the budget, it's, I think that's a compelling piece of data to say, in the past 11 years, you know, your taxes have increased an average of 2%. And, you know, in given years, you know, that's kind of a constant, I think, that people can, taxpayers can hold on to. You can get really confused when you start talking about, well, the expense was this, and then you got the equalized pupil count, and... and then you got the equalized pupil count, and the CLA went down, and all these factors can get, it is a very confusing system. But I think in messaging, whatever budget you adopt, this would be an important point to make to them, is, you know, there's been some, there's been some fluctuation in expenses and in some tax years, but overall, you know, your taxes have, have gone up on average two percent over the last, each year in the last eleven years. And then, on the right-hand side, is just kind of showing you the fluctuation, which is pretty clear, the equalized pupils, it's just been rising for the most part, you know, we have a little bit of a dip this year. And CLA, you can see how that has fluctuated. And while a declining CLA means great things for homeowners, because the value of, of your house is, is rising, it, it means the opposite in, in the effect on the school budget in terms of tax impact, so.
The absolutely amazing thing today in this data is in that middle block, I can't, the more I've seen this, the, the less I can believe. FY fifteen, you know, percent expense change at six-point-two-six, percent tax change only one-point-three. You go up one year, your change in your expenses is lower, and your tax is ten X.
Right.
All depends on the yield, and, I mean, there's so many factors involved.
You look at the, you look at the, you know, equalized pupils, it's up significantly between the one-point-three and the ten-point-seven-four. Logically, that, I mean, the CLA dropped three points, but the, the funding formula is not straightforward.
Can we publish this?
Sure.
Yeah, no, this is.
It's public now.
This is, this is good data, for sure.
Right, I, I think that would be a, one of the, one of the really important items to lead with.
Right, and I would think like writing a blurb underneath it to sort of highlight.
The pieces, you know, that, to point people's eyes to and understanding to, the budget flyer, yeah.
And, and just to kind of extend the thought that, that you were just having there, Mike, is that at the, you may have heard this in the press recently, and the top, at the top of the legislative education agenda right now is the funding formula. And last year, there was a model that got pretty close to, to getting, I think, a shout on the floor, and it, the model that was, that was being floated would be beneficial to us, because the whole concept in that model was to bring the lower spenders up toward the median and to kind of push those higher spenders down toward it. So, hopefully, that will mean, you know, some good things for us in the future if that model continues to be the one that they're in favor of.
So, it's Julian.
It will be the most important item I'm hearing in this legislative session, so when we get to the other part of the agenda where we're gonna invite Deanna and whoever the other person might end up being to come and talk to you all, that'll probably be a really good topic.
Right, because the great conversation, or the important question is what can we do to help her, push that forward again this year? The model that's gonna be helpful to, to sort of move spending towards the middle?
Yep.
Versus freezing everybody and freezing inequity?
Yes.
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 Right.
We prefer, yeah, nice to do that.
So, any questions, observations about this piece before I get, get you into the scenarios?
No, I think this is a great piece of work.
Incredibly helpful.
Thank you for, for putting this together, because it tells a story about great community support and some other changing variables that you don't always have direct control over.
Yeah, I'm thinking this becomes something that we do in the, in November, December, instead of now, right, getting, keeping this information together. Because I pulled it from a couple of different places, we had it all, but I think it's pretty interesting in this format. So, we can even start looking at that earlier in the budget cycle next year.
Yep.
Okay, so, all of you, this is the same document we looked at last week, so if you're looking electronically, it's just a, a newer tab down there on the bottom that's labeled January ninth.
I won't play with it this week.
You can, just let me get through it, then you can play with it all you want. Always got a backup copy. So, I know you wanted less scenarios, but I'll show you what I did.
But you gave us more, no kidding.
I gave you more. So, I'm gonna work from right, from left to right, starting with scenario one. And if you look at the top, you'll notice the top of column B, it just says year-to-year investments, so there are no reductions in this scenario. There are the, the investments in the elementary ELL teacher and the communications development position, and then everything else is level funded. So, where you see level funded, that means we didn't reduce any of the stuff that we talked about last week, that hundred-and-forty-six thousand that we went in and reduced. So, when you see level funded up top, that means that that stuff is still in there. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. So, in scenario one, and then you can kind of walk down, and you'll see that our equalized pupils is up, we've, we've gained three, I think, since the last time. We're still not sure, we still think it's a bit understated, but we're not sure whether it's gonna move at all. So, my recommendation to you all at this point is that, that's probably as good as we're gonna get, and maybe we'll get an improvement later, but later could be, you know, April, for all we know. So, in this, of the, the, with the most investments in this scenario, you're, you're looking at a seven-and-three-quarter increase on the expense side with over nine-and-a-half tax impact. And then, in column C, so all I did with scenario two is pull out the communications and development position. So, it's just a reduction of like seventy-five thousand dollars, it's level funded, so all the stuff is still in there, the hundred-and-forty-six K. And so, you get about a half a point reduction in the tax impact. I look at this all the time, so tell me if, so I'm looking at it and I'm talking to, you know, so tell me if what I'm saying is jiving with what you're looking at and you're understanding it.
I just can barely see it.
Finding the numbers. I can make it larger, then you won't be able to see all the scenarios.
Right.
But that's.
That's okay, kinda go with it.
Okay.
I think maybe making it larger and just scrolling across.
They don't have a, we don't have it in our agenda packet, right?
You have the Google.
It's on the back of that page.
Oh, no, it's in the Google docs.
It's a Google doc, if you just go straight to the Google doc.
I wanna drive and just put estimated tax.
And just promise that you don't do what Mike does and change numbers as soon.
I already made my promise, so I'm not touching.
Yeah, but I'm just making sure Tori doesn't. Oh, I don't.
Don't we help you get it, Tori?
Sure.
So, while they're, while they're doing that, I was, I was looking for the thing online, because I couldn't read it. But scenario one is with the ELL teacher, the communications position, and then the level funded is?
The level funded is, if you remember last week, we talked about, I went and we, we cut a lot of stuff, PD, equipment, supplies, the things that we'd kind of been trying to build up the last couple of years.
Yep.
Cut a lot of that out to the tune of a hundred-and-forty-six thousand.
Right.
So, if it's level, if it says level funded, that's still in there.
It's all that.
Yep. And if it says, you'll see over here, it starts to say hand reductions, and if it says PD, supplies, fixtures, equipment, then that hundred-and-forty-six is out.
Okay.
Okay, you ready for scenario three? So, scenario three is both of the investments, JFK, ELL teacher, and communications development position, and it reduces the stuff, the hundred-and-forty-six K. And that gets you down to six-point-eight on the expense side and eight-and-a-half estimated tax. Scenario four has no new investments and is level funded, so the stuff is still in there. Doesn't really do much, gets you down another tenth on the tax side.
Okay, so it's essentially a wash with the ELL teacher, communication director for the other cuts that you made.
Hundred-and-forty-six K and stuff for the positions, yeah. And then in scenario five, we have just the addition of the ELL teacher, and we've taken the stuff out. It's get you down on the tax side about another half a percent.
So, this would tell me that based on the work that you've done with your team, the more critical of the two investments would be the ELL teacher.
Yes.
Communications is definitely a second, based on the staffing ratios of one to forty, it's give or take.
It's really hard to prioritize those two, because I agree with the board and the, you know, the, I think there was a lot of support for in the last meeting around really leveraging that position for the capital project.
And the funding thereafter.
And fundraising and development, in the first couple of years, that role could spend a lot of time on that, and I think could really reduce the tax impact of a, of capital project on the community. So, I think it would be a great investment. It's, it's, it would be hard to sleep at night knowing that we haven't done something with these forty-five-to-one ratio of ELL students in our, you know, K-to-two grades.
Right. Understood.
All right, and then the final one is with none of those investments and with taking the stuff out, which gets us, you know, gets you at five-point-nine in the expense side and seven-point-four on the tax, estimated tax impact.
Do you have a good option?
Are you hiding a surprise option for us, Sean, right now? We got an equalized pupil gift.
The CLA is fixed, that's pretty much set at this point, right, that's not likely to change.
Unless people wanna go and, and appeal that their houses are worth less than.
So, moving right along. And the equalize, I mean, how long, last time to this time, we went up three and change, three-point-oh-eight.
Three-point-oh-eight.
Just equalized pupil, nine-eighty-five to nine-eighty-eight something, I mean, I'm not sure where we came up with the point-four-seven of an equalized pupil, but math is good. Do we expect much of a change of any substance to that from here, or do we just not have any idea?
I would, I would say from our, from our local math compared to theirs, the highest it could go would be a thousand. But it also might stay right around where it is. They're still waiting on a couple districts to get all of their data in. Now, how much that, you know, if you've got ninety-five percent of your data already in, how much, I just don't know what those districts are and how many kids they are, how much they can swing the total pool, which is gonna impact the equalization rate. So, it's just, it's really hard to give you a.
So, if I understand that there's a, an education funding, all of the districts, if all of the districts are reporting, they know the number of equalized pupils, they know what they're gonna spend per. Right now, without all the districts reporting or having the finalized data, this is an estimate based on what has been entered and/or expected to be entered?
Yes.
Against that same total dollar value to get to the base, okay.
Yeah.
I'm, I lied to you, can I fess up to that right off? I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a change in here.
But guys, a question before we go on, I'm looking at the, the tax rate on the file that you gave here.
Yep.
And it says one-point-four-eight, but the tax rate that's actual is one-point-four-nine. Why potentially the discrepancy?
Where are you?
I'm looking at the, so that row, you, you got one-point-four-nine, that's the actual tax rate, right? But when, yeah, yeah, that number, but when you look at here, on that, that, that other sheet, you have it as one-point-four-eight. What could be the discrepancy, and, and this is more for our communications kind of conversation?
Yeah, so my, my guess is, and help me, is it's probably just a, a transcription error, because we have to put in what we forecast the tax rate to be, and then it usually doesn't even get set until April or May. So, I, I'm not sure which is the right one right now.
I believe it's one-forty-eight, I'll confirm that, I can get to something to look at that.
But, yeah, we could.
Because it does slightly change, you know, because I was using one-forty-eight as our percent change, and it goes from nine now to ten. But then I'm looking at down the year and going like, well, we had a support ten percent at one point, and like you've said, the more people we get out, more people are, are gonna invest. And having talked to a few community members, I think they're in investment mode. They, they understand where we're going, but we gotta make sure we tell the right story and be as accurate and, and.
Right.
Right, that I'm not hiding anything. So.
Yeah, we'll get that right.
So, I have a letter from the city I can get to. And, let's see, the Homestead tax rate for fiscal year nineteen is one-point-four-seven-seven-seven. So, the one-point-four-eight is the number.
Is the actual.
Is the actual number.
We're looking at a percent increase, like the higher, like around the ten percent range as opposed to nine, that, that's not good for us.
Right, it's gonna, it's gonna make the tax, the difference go on. So, just another, another item on the difference between a thousand and the nine-eighty-eight, just the twelve. If I take scenario three, which is adding the ELL, adding communications, and taking out the other, just because that's where I happen to have my cursor, if I move that to a thousand?
Yep.
See what happens to the percent difference in the tax rate.
A little over a percent.
It's almost a full percent on the, on the twelve. One, I'm looking right, right here, the seven-point-three-five, if I change that back, it goes to eight-point-five-nine. So, the, those twelve equalized pupils is a big deal. It's not, it's not subtle, it's only twelve, but it's a, it's a big number. So, adopting tonight on the nine-eighty-eight, we go forward with those numbers as they are, or would we have another option?
If you wanted to have another option, then you wouldn't adopt tonight, you'd wanna wait.
Right, and it's, it's a matter of taking the scenarios here, which scenario would we, would we want?
Just going back again about the equalized pupil, you said that ninety-eight percent of, like, how many school districts have already submitted their information?
Uh, well, we're down to, what, about fifty-four now, I think, total, and I think today in his memo, it said they're missing four.
Less than ten percent.
We don't know what school districts those are, like, we're not like, on like, they're Burlington, or, you know.
No, we don't know which ones they are, and there's still, I mean, Rebecca can tell you just from, you know, the chit-chat amongst the financial managers, just people don't have a lot of confidence in the numbers that we're getting in general.
There's some.
There's some stuff that's missing and.
There's some tuition students for some districts that are missing, I believe we're still missing a few ELLs that we should get some more weight for. There's a whole list, a laundry list of things that we keep asking questions about, and I'm not sure that those are all gonna get answered this year. I think they're gonna freeze it at some point, and we're gonna have to live with it.
Well, and that, that's always, I mean, there's always that uncertainty that happens between the adoption, the vote, and then the, the tax rate being set. It's just expanding that uncertainty this year, because usually, we're pretty confident in those numbers that are coming. It's just expanding that uncertainty this year because usually we're pretty confident in those numbers that are coming to us. And we get them in a timely way and it's different this year.
We usually freeze, that number usually is frozen on December fifteenth.
No, and, and there's, these are the type of questions that I think we need to bring up to our state representatives as to why. Because it's unfair. Like, one percent tax difference on numbers that should be in, I mean, let's not make dates and not follow them. That's the problem with the rest of the world, right? December fifteenth and you don't have the numbers so that we can't make educated. But I'm also fairly confident that, like, the budget that we go here is probably, is the ceiling. Meaning like, if we get the numbers back in the full equalized people, it's going to be in our benefit, right?
Yes.
It's, you know, so what we're looking at now is the worst case scenario.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fair to say.
All right. So if we were to work to whittle this down to one, starting with all of them doesn't necessarily help. But I guess I would throw out that no investments in cutting all the supplies in scenario six is probably not something we're going to go with. So, I would say we can take that one and take it off the table. Adding, if I go to the other end, if I go to the other end in scenario one and, add two positions and level fund, in light of the fact that the CLA went down three points and the equalized pupil seems to have gone down some. Are we willing to throw that option out as our lead?
Can I look at this scenario with the equalized pupil at a thousand and just be able to compare nine point six four?
Go ahead, because if I screw it up, I don't have to fix it. I think I put the other one back.
You did.
Okay.
So it goes from nine, nine...
Nine point six four to eight point three eight.
So it's a percent change.
It's a percent, it's a pretty...
It is, and that's...
That's best case scenario for us.
Right.
That is best case, right?
And I'm not saying that we should go around there, but that's the range I'm looking at.
That'll go up a little bit after your catch rate there, the four point, one point four seven seven is a different number.
It's, it's going to go higher.
Yeah.
The other thing to remember too is that, well, when you look at these numbers too, the yield could change and the, there's other things they can change too. I just always like to keep reminding people of that.
Right, right, this is subject to change right into May. Right, after we've already adopted, so. And not in subtle, not in subtle, but, you know, it, it can work for us and it can work against us because last year we hadn't expected to see a two percent drop in the taxes.
Right.
Yeah.
And we got it. So I mean, that's, you can complain when it goes against you, but you can't really complain when it goes for you. I don't think that works, so. We've got to go with what we got.
Well, and to that idea, looking at the longer term makes a lot of sense, right? Talk to people about over ten years, over eleven years.
Right.
So am I clear that I've heard that if we choose a scenario tonight and the numbers change, we can't change the scenario?
If you adopt...
A particular scenario?
Yes.
We're sticking with it regardless of how the numbers change?
Yes, because we have to warn a budget.
So we can't adopt one based on a contingency? I know that we've done that before, like, we adopt this, but we, if something else happens, then we're going there, like...
No, I think the, the, if you, if you are feeling that way as a board, then you would say, we're not comfortable adopting a budget tonight, let's come back next week. But then we start getting into the warning timeline, so you have to adopt a budget.
And we're also not clear that waiting a week is going to give us any more information, right? So.
No, not.
So here's the other...
So what I would recommend that we do tonight is cut the scenarios down to as few, what do we want to add if there's one or two and then if we want to wait to adopt? We don't have to come back and have that full, we don't have to come back and have that full discussion.
Yeah, I was counting towards one and three.
I was going one and three.
Because three keeps the ELL and the communications and just cuts out supplies, which can be replaced at some point. And we also have to keep in mind, we have to make it affordable for our residents.
Yes.
We don't want to jack up the prices, especially going forward, so.
And scenario three ends up being...
To me, scenario three seems the best outcome.
Being a relative wash. You get the ELL teacher in there to cut the staffing ratios, you get the communications director in there to hopefully help us get some
Good funding.
Funding with the, you know, the capital.
And great communication.
And...
Part of what I would argue is...
And it lowers, it's a lower percent, so it's not as drastic because people are going to freak over high percent.
How much professional development are we cutting out here?
I don't know.
Professional development's part of this?
It's PD, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but it's not all, I mean, a hundred and forty-six K is not all PD, it's a combination of all those things.
I mean, I'm trying to prioritize of...
So what, here's the PD that would still be available. So there's the contractually negotiated professional development monies for teachers and for support staff that are still budgeted for. So these were other dollars that principals can, you know, approve for, or direct teams of teachers to go do work.
And some of that money, we are able to get, we can sometimes use the federal funding for it. So we're always trying to pull things out of the federal budgets because we want to make it more concrete. So, you know, our hope is that some of that we took out, we can still continue to use federal funding with. It's always a risk. But it's not a dead end, so to speak.
Can I ask from the supply, I mean, you're not cutting all the supplies, you're just cutting a little bit, like...
Mostly we're level funding where we were last year for supplies. We didn't really take away a lot from people. It was minimal.
So what people asked for and then we just cut it back.
Okay, so, okay, so it's not like we're like taking everything.
Oh, no, no, no.
But you also, like I said before, you also have to remember where we came from.
No, I know.
Yeah.
We didn't come from abundance.
Right.
You know, and we were trying to build those things back in, so people felt like they had the tools to do their jobs.
And that's where I'm trying to balance.
Yeah.
I, I'm at one and three, but, you know, I want to listen to Jen and lean towards three, but only if three doesn't, I'm thinking now also of my teachers and the morale of teachers here, you know.
I'm one and three as well. Is there some sort of like hybrid between the two of those where maybe you put in half the supplies back and it keeps us under some psychological threshold where the tax impact is below nine, maybe it's like eight point nine five, but you still retain some morale and keep the new positions?
Well, scenario two would basically be that if you put half of the supplies back in.
But scenario two loses the...
You lose the communication.
Right.
Right, but the communication director and the, and the cuts in the other.
Oh, you mean that's what the, that's what the numbers match.
The dollar amount, yeah.
Gotcha, yeah, okay.
Because you're really looking at, you know, from scenario three to two, you're adding like seventy-five thousand or something, you know, which would be half of that.
So, I think just from that then, any, anybody would argue that keeping one and three open as contingencies and slashing two, four and five will leave us in a position that if we get more data on equalized pupils next week, that, I'm assuming it won't go down.
Even if we get the, even if we get it, I still think three is the better way to go. I do. I know, I get what you're saying about the teachers' morale and stuff, but I don't think, I don't think our, our manager or our superintendent would ever put it to make their morale go down from it. I think they probably did exactly what, they just tightened their belts and are making it, you know. I, so I think three, even if it benefits us in the long run, when we get equalized people up, that'll lower that seven, so it would only...
Still got a thousand in that first one, right?
So it would only, you know what I'm saying? I really strongly believe three is the way to go, but that's just my opinion.
And, and, and I can go with three, because we are, if, if we can keep the communications and development person, and it is part of their goal to help think creative ways of fundraising, to help with maybe on the supplies and equipment. I can go, I mean, it, that has to be part of that job description, you know, as part of that communications position. Then, you know, I'm going to probably lean towards that. I just wanted to make, when, when it first presented to myself, I was like, we're cutting it all out.
No.
And if you're not, then...
Confident that you, if we ask teachers to, they would be very amenable to giving up some of that stuff in pursuit of, of the bigger picture.
Right.
Right. And, and, and then I can live with three with the caveat, like, you know, with, hopefully that communicate, we really hire someone dynamic on that communications.
And just to put your mind at ease, Alex, like, when we did this, we kept track of everything we cut, and we were doing like a hundred and fifty dollars here, seventy-five here, I mean, it was, it was painful.
Right.
And we took a lot of time to do it and, and most of it was, was, we tried to get them back to where we were this year for supplies.
Right.
So I think we can move forward. I mean, obviously it's nice to have more.
Right. And, and I guess at least scenario three also show, does show in the long run that we're investing in the school with two new positions.
To me, the ELL is a non-starter. Taking that out is not something to go forward.
And I don't think taking the communications is a bad...
Well, it offers another talking point with legislators too, because there also has been some pretty broad discussion at the legislative level in the last couple of years about increasing the ELL weighting. You know, which, you know, if you change that from the point two five to point four or something, we wouldn't be having the same discussion.
Right. And the weight, the weight is definitely there from a, a, a impact to, to the staff, there's no doubt. Yeah, I, I, to me, I think that from the, cutting the supplies fixtures and equipment, we have had some though minor level of a positive balance at the end of the year that I think with focus and, you know, can, can overcome half of that easily. So I don't think that that one's going to quite get in its way as much as, as we might think.
Can we, we're lucky now to have two community members here, can we ask for their thoughts?
Yeah. You haven't seen a whole lot of this, but I'm not sure.
Do you have any thoughts to offer in part of our, of our discussion?
Well, I guess I would just turn it back and say is, you know, I think there is a level of healthy separation when it comes to looking at city budgets and school budgets. So I'm happy to weigh in strictly as a community member, but wouldn't want to go down the territory of, you know, decisions of those side by side budgets. I mean, me personally, I think, I think we have an amazing school system that's worth investing in. I don't know from a taxpayer perspective, you know, there is kind of a mental difference between that whole one percent, but if you're, if it's eight point eight five percent, people are going to round up to nine anyway. So there's really not, you know, whatever it is. I don't think that there's a significant passage of the budget concern there. Both of the ads from a staffing perspective sound like really important investments. That's just me personally from a community member.
Thank you.
I like three for all of the reasons that you mentioned. Certainly the staffing piece seems essential to me. And if, if the communications person is an effective staff member, that can be a huge gain for the district depending on how hard that person works and how effective the person is, so.
One of, one of the things that you're, a little bit of a disadvantage in that particular discussion is that with the capital project, we've talked about that person doing national fundraising for grants and, and, you know, other things, so that, that makes, you can pay that position back pretty quickly. Especially if you incent them.
I think there is a really important larger messaging discussion because the city's tax rate increase will likely be around six percent when we land on a budget this year. On top of a likely raise in water and sewer rates. Which isn't, it's not substantial, so it's not substantial and we're way below a lot of the communities around us. This is really helpful for me because I've been out knocking on doors and even though I don't, you know, I don't have any involvement with this board, I do get questions from community members. It's helpful for me to be able to message as a supporter of the school budget, to be able to let people know what they're investing in when they vote.
Right. All right. So we're, I think, pretty much set with three?
I would support three as well, but just one last food for thought, and I hate to think negatively. If for any reason this does not get passed, this gives us nowhere to go but cutting positions if we select option three.
Well, we would just, right, we would have to take out the communications.
And the ELL director, so I mean...
Well, we would have to keep the ELL first. I would pass that first, yeah. And then we have nowhere else to go.
Yes, it just...
I agree with that.
The other, the other scenarios, right, that, that those two positions are the bargaining pieces that we have to play with.
But when you're talking to the community members about it and they're like, oh, why is it going up this much? You can say, well, we cut back on, you know, this amount, so we're mindful of it, but, you know, this is really important to our district.
Again, not to lose sight, the, the vast majority of the increase here, when you, when you consider that the reduction from the supplies, the equipment, is pretty much offsetting the ELL teacher and the communications director, this increase is benefits and salaries.
Twelve percent, twelve percent increase in healthcare, yeah.
Right, that, that underlying twelve percent in, in the healthcare is not in...
Let's not forget the CLA has really gone down.
There's a number of talking points, right?
That's a good, yeah.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, all of that put together, I think we go with, with three, but I think before adopting three today, I would like to see what we get for any improvements to the equalized pupil.
So, we have a tour scheduled for six thirty next Wednesday. So you could choose to try and meet somehow around that if you wanted to, to do this, so meet earlier.
I could do six, earliest.
Or you could do it on Thursday. I wouldn't want to go any earlier because it's just not going to give enough time for change, possible change.
So tour is six thirty? I thought your notice is five thirty, I wrote it down as five thirty.
The first one was five thirty for sixteen, for sixteen.
That's wrong.
And then it goes...
Should be six thirty, because the PTO meeting's at five thirty, so we're going to do it an hour later, hoping they'll join.
Okay. Six thirty. So we're saying that that would be a good time for us to get together to make the decision?
Well, that would be an option.
To adopt.
I mean, it's a, you'd have, you'd do a different start time, but you're just doing, it's still, I mean, it's, it's a special meeting, it's a public meeting, needs to be warned, all those good things. But you'd just be taking that action. So I don't think, you know, changing the time to six is not a big deal. Or you could, if you guys are available or have a forum, to be available on Thursday.
Fine with Thursday? Wait, it's not going to be that long, right?
No.
So even if I had to bring my grants on, it'd be okay?
To this?
But, but the only reason we would hold it is pupil change. Like, you could tell us, like, you know, board, like, equalized pupil hasn't changed.
If he freezes it on Monday, then we can tell you.
Right.
That it's not going anywhere.
Do you think that's likely?
It could be.
Could, could happen, yeah. I want to stop, I feel like I'm like in a casino or something.
Yeah. Well, the email said they'll likely freeze it soon.
If you all are going to, if you all are going to be here at six thirty next Wednesday anyway, why don't just two of us come for like fifteen minutes ahead of that? And we'll know, and it should be like, we'll just be super quick and adopt at that point, rather than schedule another day on Thursday?
And I'm available, so.
Are you going to Wednesday?
Can do Wednesday.
Six o'clock, can everybody make six?
We'll have to be in a different space because the PTO's in here.
Have threw up on you, but yeah, sure.
Jen, we don't care, just your presence is all we need. It's all good.
All right, great.
You know, right?
I do, I do. It's getting short. Did you get your newsletter written?
In my head.
Put it on paper.
For it starts, yes, first step. I've been too busy. We had to move the daycare in the back of the house, so.
All right. So, thank you guys for all the work in, in getting all the scenarios to, to help
Yes.
at least get the discussion down to where we are here, so I appreciate that. All right. The board performance mid-year progress update, I just, one of the updates that I had on that one, well, two, two things I'd like to throw in on that one. One, I, I did talk to Val for our non, what do I call it? We're non-compliant with our three-year plan for the community action. So, out, one of our education options we talked about during the retreat was to have Val come in and help us talk through, work through and hopefully plan into how do we put a three-year plan together for community engagement. So that'll happen in April. Val, come in and, and help us out with that. The other piece, and Alex, you kinda tipped this one off for me, was our, our progress with our um, interpretations to the policies, uh, is, by design up to this point been slow because we haven't done them all each in a year and we'll, we'll start to do those, so in the next annual agenda, I'll put all of those um, in succession to do all, I think we, we've got eight of them or something, so we should be able to do them as we go through the, the year, between Sean's interpretations, our interpretations, and the two policies that we review each time we get together, which are missing this time. We'll have those changes. I'd like to solicit though, other comments on what we've got going from a board um, performance standpoint, any other thoughts on how we do things better? If there's anything we should be doing differently, anybody we should be uh, getting in here, changing the board meetings? Anything?
I think by and large, we function really, really well, the only suggestion I might make is that I think sometimes when our meetings go past eight-thirty, we're not governing, governing well in that last hour. So either just matching the agenda to the timeframe of two hours, or moving quicker through some of the items would be one recommendation that I make, other than that, I think we're doing fantastic.
Okay.
I would actually agree with that, good point.
And so, one of the things we could do, need to do then, is when we look through the annual agenda to make sure that they don't get too stacked in any particular place. And then, if we continue to run over, um, one of the thing that keeps coming back in my head, Val making the comment that are you taking on board work, and if the, you know, timing of our meetings, I'm gonna say this, then I'm gonna duck and hide, because I know it's, one of the items we do have the ability to, to play with is the focus on learning. But I know where everybody sits on that one, I think, in that that has been one of the valuable pieces to hear from. So, but that is obviously an option, um, that wouldn't do that light-heartedly, taking that piece out, because I think it's a very critical piece. Okay, anything else, any other comments?
We had talked about monitoring ourselves, back to the checklist.
Hmm, yes.
I think that would be a great idea, to keep.
That was supposed to be me doing.
Yes, and is that a monthly, you got two more chances.
Every other month, just to keep it.
Quarterly, maybe?
Yeah, you know, just to keep the sort of the five points of good governance.
Because they're really redundant, a lot of the questions were redundant.
Right.
We could also streamline them.
Exactly, so if you streamline it, one page, quick.
About every other month, it's not, it doesn't take long, it just keeps.
Yep, the focus.
Focus of what good governance is and reminding ourselves of what our role is in that, on the forefront.
So, what I'll do with that then is I'll, I'll, I'll take the, the annual agen- annual agenda and pop that in there, so we have it right on with a month warning that, you know, next month we'll, we'll do that.
I mean, if you have the question, if you, because I know there was that really long form, right, if that ever gets, if that gets pared down, then we could just pop it into a form and then send it out electronically, you guys can do it, and then you can
Do the results here rather than.
In a meeting.
Do we have that list? I'd be happy to pair it, like, look through it and just sort of.
It should be, I think it's on the drive.
Right?
Okay.
It's in the drive.
What list is this?
It's a.
Yeah, you, that's right, you had, I don't know if Matt had ever seen it either.
In the beginning, but then we stopped doing it, because it was so.
Progress monitoring.
It was just so like, all the same questions, just differently.
It was like a board self-assessment checklist, I think it was called.
And so, is it just a bunch of things, are we actually following what it is that we said we were doing? But it asks the same question in a, a number of different ways, I think it, it is, that would actually be a great idea, is to send it out as a form and have that as a discussion point, but do the filling in outside of here.
I think as a board though, we're pretty good about communicating what the needs of the board are, so that it makes it easier, that you don't need one of those. But they are always good to have in case.
I, I think it was called Board Self-Assessment Checklist.
Yep. One other thing to add, glad I can spell board, that's always helpful. We were thinking about inviting other people to this board meeting for something, and now I can't remember what it was.
We had.
Was it around the community forums that we did? But we were gonna invite another group of people to have another board conversation.
One of them might have been having parents come in to have, or, or community members come in to have the discussion about the way we think, uh, feel about the school.
Yeah, I think it was kinda shaped to the conversations we had last year. I don't know if we wanna continue, I, I would think, especially with all these project coming on, um, might be helpful to have a community forum at the board table? With specific questions and conversations, structured conversation to have.
Between now and April?
Maybe, that works.
Because we have a community dinner. We have a community dinner, or breakfast planned.
For the capital project.
Right.
Okay.
Would take that one, but.
Something about, we don't have to say it right now, but I just remember it being something that we had been talking about and I know it kinda fell off.
Well, and I think, when you asked the question, Mike, one of the things I was thinking of was the work that the two of you did, you know, last year, I think was, was um, could be really useful. You know, and how do we bring some of that back and then do a next step with it? And I think managing your capacity as a board between budget, negotiations, capital project, community engagement. You know, I, I know you're a board that um, wants to do a lot, but you also want to do things well. So, you know, it's the, I'm sure we all face it in our jobs, I, we face it every day, right? Everything seems essential, but we gotta get really targeted and focused on, on, you know, what you guys wanna accomplish as a board.
I'm not finding that self-assessment checklist. So.
I'll check it, man.
Don't fuss your eyes on it, I'll be happy to.
I got it.
Look it over and streamline it.
Yeah, and then get it into a form, I, I would say no more than once every three months.
Okay.
I would think, that, from what I remember of it, so I'm gonna add um, self-assessment. And we'll see if we can slip one in this year and I'll put it into the annual agenda, so we have it there as a reminder. I write it in his book and then Sean sends me a note later and said, did you get this done yet? I might, I don't know why I wrote it down. But, thank you, Ben. Saved me from myself.
Board Self-Assessment Plan Doc.
No, that's not it.
That one isn't it though. That wasn't the checklist that we went through. No. Well, we can uh, take a couple of looks for it and see where we can find it. Alright, um, the last item we have here is the uh, planned uh, meeting with the legislators. Who that may be.
It's still undecided?
Yeah, the governor has to choose. We may, the people can support, you know, we, we've submitted names, we've submitted a person's name, but in the long run, the governor gets to choose whoever he, he wants to do. Hopefully, he's listening to the people of Winuski and taking the name of the suggestion that we put forward. But um, it really is up to the governor at this point. So.
We do know one.
Yes.
So, I think uh, education funding and uh, funding piece. What I would really like, let me, let me start at a different spot, what I would really like to do is to be able to get them several questions, six or maybe eight questions that we wanna talk about, out in advance. So that they have a chance, it's not something they come in here and say, oh, I don't have that with me. I'd like to give them an option, opportunity to go round up the data and come back and detail and see if they can come back with something. So if we can come up with six or eight questions now, or if something comes up and, you know, two AM like they usually do with me, write them down and send them, we can get them on the list, get them out to Deanna and whomever.
For, for one, for, for one of me, it's like, how do you hold these units accountable so that we get the number, I mean, I'm, year after year, I know this is one of your big issues, Mike, is that like, year after year, we're like, spending a lot of time talking about budgets because we got numbers that we're waiting for, and you're telling me that number should be here at December fifteenth? And they're not in, what's the accountability there? Isn't that the job of the legislators, to hold people accountable to deadlines?
Yes.
So, I mean, it, it, I mean, do you think we're joking here? This is hard stuff here. Uh, and you're taking up a lot of time that, you know, in some ways, I wish I had more energy to do the community engagement.
Mm-hmm, right. It's also real people's money, like, we're in charge of other people's money.
Right.
They should at least be, have some higher standards around giving us information we need to make really good decisions for the citizens of our cities and towns.
Understanding that some of it by default and by process has to happen after, like the final yield numbers, probably some, but.
Equalized pupil December fif- if you set a date, equal, if you set a date, why are the school, why are there only four school districts still late?
Because there was a change in the student data system that was also not done timely and supported and so forth.
So where's.
Set it back, so you know, there's this, there's a lot of this going on.
And I get that, but like, there's someone, what's the accountability on this end? Sorry, you probably.
I appreciate your.
No, we're not dealing with it every day.
It's hard to do our job and be held accountable from the other aspect when we can't get what we need, and it's, it's frustrating, and it does waste time on, on our part, we should be moving on, doing other things now, but I mean, it's, it's the way it is this year, so we just have to accept it.
Fair enough, I, I, you know, and I get system changes and all that, but come on.
We wanna slow down the system changes, let's do one and do it well.
Alright, what else? Um, budget, um, funding, uh, education funding formula, what, what around that? How, how would I articulate something to have, uh, say, Deanna go research and bring something?
I want the transparency of this equalized per, um, pupil equation, that so that we know what goes into it, so that like, I can look at it and like, change the numbers and know, like, not this like, I think it's gonna be a thousand, like, if it's a formula, sorry, as a mathematician or like someone that looks at math, there's components of this that I know, right?
Yeah.
What's this like, we, we don't know, it's transparent, like, we can't tell you, like, you should be able to be a tracker in some ways, like.
Well, yes, and they are, they, they do, they are tracking, they just don't have all the data right now.
Well, I get that, but I could at least look at the equations.
Yeah.
To, to like, do like, you know, like what I said here, like, okay, now I know this is the ceiling, and here's the, um, like, here's the floor of the range, so that I know what I'm talking about the tax rate, like, you have an Excel worksheet that if I sat down and debugged and figure, I could figure out all the formulas and give you the exact numbers, right?
Yeah.
You can backwards engineer, I wanna know what that equalized pupil formula is.
Yeah.
So that we can be more accurate in estimating
Yeah.
The districts.
So that wouldn't be something I would ask legislators to do for you, we could do that for you.
Okay, sorry.
Okay.
Just because they won't know.
Mike, when are we gonna invite legislators to come to visit us?
When? Next month.
Next month?
Yeah, at our February meeting.
Not knowing what legislators are taking on right now, I, we might be better informed to ask them questions when we see, when some of the bills are starting to form, because then get explanations about how they arrived at that and how they might impact us, so maybe, I mean, we could email you with questions later, like, later on this month.
Yep, yep, we can, uh, what I'll do is if we come up, what we come up with tonight, I'll get out, um, to Deanna at least, um, for a starter. And as you get them, send them, and
Yeah.
We'll go see, right now, I've got the, understanding the accountability to get the data to us, I think that is something that we have to at least put the bug in their ear to, to keep an eye on. The education, changes in the education funding formula. Where are, and I think that one is a open-ended question as to where are they at the point in time when they come, when she comes to talk to us? What are the, what is the buzz? I think Nicole will probably keep us up to speed pretty well with uh, the BSBA updates that, that she does, so.
And Governor Scott's uh, address is tomorrow afternoon. You can listen to it whenever you want at some point, but that would, that's always an indication. Although there's a supermajority this year, so it's gonna be interesting for him to try and do much, but. The, the other, um, you know, in the past, it's always been like Clem and Deanna, right? You know, the local reps, I wondered if you were interested at all in, if there are kind of county representatives, senators, yeah, that um, are on the education committees?
It's a great idea.
Invite them to join.
Even a better idea.
Yes.
Ash, I think would be the, the one, right?
Uh, Baruth is the, he has been the chair of the Senate Ed, uh, from Burlington, Phil Baruth. And then I saw something about, um, I think it's uh, Webb, I forget her first name. Katie, I think that she is um, um, she's still a rep or is she a senator?
She's a senator.
Okay, she's on, what's that?
She's a rep.
Oh, she's a rep, okay.
She was, she was appointed the chair of, of House Ed. Yeah.
Good.
So we could expand that conversation if you wanted.
I, I'd say we open up the, open up the invite and broaden the discussion, make sure we get the questions out. And then, general discussions, maybe we get down to thoughts on equalized pupil calculations and any changes. Uh, education funding, we can get a little deeper into the formula changes they're talking about, what does that mean or not mean to us? But again, I'd like to, you know, just in general, we can ask these, these particular questions, but please come back with anything else that, that you may come up with.
Construction aid.
Can I ask a question in whether, um, ears on the ground, like, how are the other school districts about Act seventy-seven? The, is there gonna be pushback on that, you think, at all?
Act seventy-seven, flexible pathways?
Yeah.
By whom?
Other school districts that are up, potentially upset, you know, and do you see any?
The only, the ones that I've heard, the, the, the pushback that I've heard is mostly from um, rural districts who feel like they don't have access to the same types of uh, flexible learning opportunities that we do in Chittingan County and other more suburban places. And so there, there, uh, s- some leaders feel like that's actually gonna broaden the equity gap. Because they may not have opportunities for do-enrollment like we do, or to go work in a business if they've got, you know, a lot of small businesses, but nothing, you know. So that's the, that's the only, and, and, and the other is just more a question of capacity, you know, everybody's thinking about like, like, how do we do all this stuff?
Right, no, I just didn't wanna, if, if there were, there are rumors of like, or, or a flow of other communities trying to push back on Act seventy-seven, whether we needed to.
You mean forty-six, do you mean the merger?
No, seventy, I'm really.
I thought you meant the lawsuits and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen the lawsuits, but I, I've been hearing every now and then the grumbling because, you know, there's other communities that, you know, like the traditional curriculum. And they're usually the more wealthy communities, are they push, using their legislators to push back on it?
I haven't heard of that.
Okay.
But it wouldn't surprise me at some point if that starts to happen, and, you know, there are other states that actually there's a lot of pushback going on.
Right, and I didn't know if we needed.
It costs more. For flexible pathways.
Right.
I mean, it has changed.
And I didn't know if we needed to kinda like, ways to ask questions with the state letters, to give them information, to ensure that we're very supportive of this. Fight strong, like, you know, try to make sure that those type of bills don't.
Right. A lot of what we end up talking in the regional superintendent group on, in this topic, not just Act seventy-seven, but when talking to legislators, is the idea of there's been a tremendous amount of leg- education legislation in the last eight years, and we're just catching up. You know, between Act sixty, one sixty-six and pre-K, between Act forty-six, seventy-seven, now one seventy-three is coming with uh, census model for special education, there was one fifty-three with the consolidation of special ed, so, and within all of those, there's a lot of stuff. They're not just simple legislation, so our, our, what we talk about is the message needs to be like, stop. So our, what we talk about is the message needs to be like, stop and practice oversight versus writing of legislation. So, get people in to talk about what's happening with Act Seventy Seven, and is that what they envisioned when they wrote the legislation? And practice oversight, instead of continuing to write new bills.
And that's our question, is like, what is the oversight on this, you know, of these legislative bills? And have you thought about it so that we can pivot more quickly, but give our school districts a chance to breathe?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So how are they, how are they measured, monitored for?
The effectiveness, the effectiveness and the efficiency of the bills that they have proposed in the last three, four years? And is, you know, and can we slow this down so that our schools can actually monitor the assessment of the effectiveness of these bills?
And therefore be able to make changes to make it effective.
Right, right, rather than just adding new stuff, that Band-Aids.
Right, because that is, that is one of the source spots in public education, or maybe any institution, is you just keep adding more and more without being reflective and having design thinking around it. So that you know what you're changing, why you're changing it, does it work, does it not, what's the better solution? So it can be more solution-oriented and sort of through effectiveness and measuring, to be able to make different kinds of decisions, versus just throwing on a whole new piece of legislation to try to solve some problem that might have been solved if we'd done oversight and design thinking for the legislation that came down.
Good, that'll get them started. Should we invite them and have them say yes, and then send them?
Yeah.
Wait, never mind, we just blew that.
I'm sure they're watching.
They're not, this is the most entertaining school board.
I know, right?
Have you not gotten that award? Excepted on our behalf the other day.
Okay, anything, anything else? We do have a, an executive session for a brief update on the labor negotiations.
Did anybody go to any activities?
Oh, any?
Before I jump over.
The Winter Fest was wonderful.
The winter performance?
Yeah.
Yes, that was wonderful.
You both went?
Yeah.
I enjoyed the, this is me.
Oh, that was powerful.
I thought I had mentioned this at one point, I'm like, I noticed that every now and then y'all flow this song, and I recorded it, and I was like, really happy, um, the Winter Fest.
Music festival, or?
The Winter Fest.
Performance for JFK.
JFK Winter Concert.
Yeah.
So.
What I'm excited about, what I saw is the Wicked Cold Comedy Fest for fundraising for Penguin Plunge, that sounds exciting.
So Katrina Hughes, who is a speech language pathologist and is our new Penguin, Penguin Plunge and Unified Sports Coordinator, is doing all of that, and has done, really done a wonderful job. They've already raised some money through an exercise-thon of some sort, and.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, I think we're up for about five and a half thousand dollars now that we've raised.
So when's the plunge?
February second.
I also went around the Winuski Art Walk that we had on last Friday, and it's on the first of every Friday. And I've cornered all the artists and talked about the school budget, and encouraged them to do the community forum. Not as many people go, but, and so it was a great opportunity to talk to Winuski people about our school district.
Awesome. All right. So, anything else before we close our main session and enter the executive session? All right, I would accept a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay.